We had a short break while we changed the tape and now we're back to continue our discussion with the Cape Cod Commission. And we have three members of the Commission here, Paul Metzweke, Patty Daly, and Gail.
Gail.
Gail Hand.
Coin.
Coin.
You're two Gails.
That's right.
I think they have what you gave me.
Well, I do want to say it makes it very easy to read your budget, your goals, your presentation, all of that. It's very well done and the categories are very clear and it didn't take me too long to read it. So, I appreciate that and understand it as well. So, Paul?
We thank Gail for that.
Yes, well, I thought about that, too. Thank you, Gail.
Yeah, just as sort of a general oversight, you know, we're a very conservative increase this year and we're looking at cuts in a lot of grants, so we've had to make some adjustments there. And we're still waiting for final word on some of those potential cuts and we're prepared to make adjustments where necessary. But I'm going to let Gail bring you through some of the specifics.
Okay, sure, just, you know, just a brief overview and then we can get into questions if you'd like. It is always a challenge to balance the budget with decreasing revenues in some areas, costs always going up more than 2.5 percent, but we can increase our assessment.
Tell me about it.
Okay, don't have to. Personnel costs in our department are close to 80 percent of our budget. For salaries, we are keeping the existing current staffing levels. We have budgeted 2 percent cost of living adjustment and steps as they were appropriate. About half of the staff now is maxed out on steps. For fringe benefits, we're actually projecting a decrease in health insurance costs due to the anticipated savings with health insurance reform. Mark, I'm not sure if he has already told you on more of that. It would be nice if there could be more savings and maybe we'll know more about that later this month. Retirement, we're projecting an increase of 6 percent. And some areas where you'll notice some changes for equipment were up a little bit. I budgeted replacement costs for about 15 PCs and a networked copier. We have made reductions where we needed to, significantly the portable housing technical assistance program. We have been budgeting $30,000 for that. We've reduced that by half to $15,000. And you'll see a line item for supplies. It was basically a reduction in our software costs because in fiscal '12, our current fiscal year, we were paying for the enterprise project management software, so it will go down next year. We've also budgeted, you'll see in our planning program, potential legal costs. We've budgeted $100,000 for wastewater issues and we'll use that as we need to. And we're anticipating taking that from our reserve for that purpose. On the revenue side, we are requesting again no county funds for this budget. 2.5 percent increase to our tax assessment. In grants, you'll notice some of the longstanding ones may have some decreases. MassDOT, you'll notice a small decrease. We actually, that's actually what we've seen so far to date. We don't have numbers for next year yet. If we find that that program is being reduced further, we'll certainly make the necessary It appears that the whole program will be reduced by close to half. You won't see that in our revenue projection for this year. Bless you, the anticipated admin costs for that program. We're about a year ahead in admin fees in that program with HUD, so we don't expect a decrease there. For department revenues, we increased slightly our regulatory revenue estimate. You may remember, bless you, that last year we increased our fee structure. We adopted a new fee structure. We brought in more than $100,000 to date and we're hopeful that next year we'll be able to do the same. We increased the estimate to $100,000. And you'll notice that some of this budget would be offset with permitted funds, $100,000 from WAGL, as I mentioned, and our capital building reserve fund, $25,000 for those equipment costs. And that's really the sort of summary. I don't know if you have any specific questions or do you want to talk about program or you would like to?
The $100,000 for Anderson-Creve is something that has continued concern to all of us because the real issue is where I have a personal wish to remain in play and to be part of an outcome. I also have some concerns as to whether or not we're just funding, you know, let's say a retainer, a retainage for a law firm without any evidence that we're actually seeing some support of an outcome. So, how can we, how can we know more about, you know, about, let's say, the relationship between the commitment that we have and the exposure, you know, that, how long the exposure would be?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard some concerns about that number, but that number is there as a reserve. If you look at, I think the real issue is expenditures. How much are we going to spend on legal defense? And the Cape Cod Commission is a regulatory agency, is engaged in litigation perpetually. You may have read in the newspaper last week, we just successfully defended a lawsuit that pertained to the Forestville Municipal Airport in a way that strongly defended the Commission's position. So, we do that every year. If you go back to look from '07 through the present, for example, our legal expenditures, except for a big dip in '08, have really sort of started to come down as they relate to expenditures. So, how much we hold in reserve for any one issue and whether we spend it on a matter that we're actually a litigant in, I think is a new issue. I mean, we have had, until his passing last year, Eric Wollinger as Commission Counsel for 20 years, we often use him in non-litigation matters where we're not offended, to advise us on certain things. So, it's common practice and I don't know why it's all of a sudden become a hot button issue, but/or it is related to wastewater. There are issues, you know, related to that.
Having served on the Cape Cod Commission for six years and being what I'd call familiar with Eric's contribution to, I can understand why, you know, the importance of this continuing association. But I also know that he was part of a lot of the initiation and has, let's say, has standing with regard to a broad spectrum of issues with regard to the Cape Cod Commission. So, to me, that's a different, you know, that provides a different definition of usefulness. The concern that I have is that wastewater management piece and making progress with it, if we are, and I know we're talking about reserves, I know that it's a matter of expenditure, but the concern that I have is with the money that we are putting in reserves to support what I'd call an attempt to be at a, let's say, at the table, could that money have been spent in the battle of hearts and minds with constituents with regard to education, with regard to support of, let's say, the identification of particular priority areas? Could it support the, let's say, a wider scope for the wastewater, you know, estuaries and watershed areas? So, it's a question of we're doing this in anticipation of something that we haven't got any, you know, hard evidence that we're going to be part of yet and will, and that brings the next question. We're supposed to know something.
There are three questions that are already there, so I don't want to miss any of them because I think there are several strands of misconception in what you put forward. And in some sense, Bill, I think I just answered that question and I'm not sure if you're not satisfied with the question, but you're asking it again. The shortest answer is could we use it for other broader purposes? The answer is no. Comes out of a legal reserve. It is there specifically to be used for matters that are related to sort of legal counsel and where we would need outside counsel assistance to assist us. And I think I already forgot the first point. But, you know, there's, I don't really understand, oh, well, the first point is you say you recognize Eric's usefulness here. Eric is no longer with us, so the firm that we're using now has no special standing, if that's what you were implying, that Eric has no special standing.
I wasn't aware that Eric was normal.
Yeah, Eric passed away several months ago.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, unfortunately, he became ill and very quickly.
I wish I had known at the time. I'm really sorry to hear it. I thought he made a continuing, a significant contribution to what?
You know, Eric Wollinger's contribution to the Cape Cod Commission can only be understated. I mean, he was, you know, seminal at the beginning and was important throughout, but we have tried to make adjustments even internally in the budget by creating sort of a Commission Counsel position, by trying to do more of that legal work in-house, which has resulted in decreased legal spending on the Commission's part. So, we're balancing that now, but we're using new outside counsel, same law firm Eric was associated with, but, you know, a new contract, which we also got a better rate than we had with Eric. We negotiated down this year. So, you know, I, it's a little bit frustrating when we've structured a legal program that in every way has reduced costs and increased our ability to protect ourselves from additional costs. What I find peculiar about the $100,000, though, is I'm not sure, you know, it sort of suggests that on any given issue of legal expenditures, you could weigh in and say, we want you to spend legal money there, but we don't want you to spend legal money there. And I think we've, we sort of danced close to that issue a couple of months ago and I think that there's a, in the Cape Cod Commission Act, you know, we have sort of the ability to defend ourselves as we see fit. And that's what the legal reserve is there for. We've been extraordinarily responsible with it. I can't understand why people are signaling out individual issues on which we are expending legal funds and suggesting that we should spend legal funds for outside counsel here, but we shouldn't there. You know, so I'm a little bit protective of that, especially when the expenditures are going down and in every step of the way, we have decreased costs. So, I, you know, and I don't like to question people's motives, but the facts, the empirical facts, don't support some of the questions that I hear about that $100,000 in any respect at all.
You're questioning my motives?
No, I said I'm not going to question anyone's motives because I think that's a slippery slope. You know, I don't like my motives questioned either.
I hear that. My concern is always if we are spending the public's money, that we need to have some sense, and this is the time when we get that sense, as to the justification of doing it.
Except that we're really talking about a reserve. We're not talking about, we're not talking about monies that are budgeted.
But there is this point that's being made publicly.
Constantly.
That somehow if we're not a named defendant in a lawsuit, we can't spend legal funds. And I don't know where that came from. I mean, it's just not true. It's just, it's inaccurate. It hasn't been true in 20 years. It's not true now. And it doesn't matter how much you keep saying, it's not going to make it true. And so, that's the kind of misinformation that I think is extraordinarily dangerous when it's unleashed out there. And so, anytime anyone has that question, if they want to see the legal expenditure budget for the last five years, we'll show them. If they want to see how we've moved more of those outside costs inside at a reduced cost, we'll show them. If they want to see the reduced contract that we just negotiated with our outside counsel, we'll show them that.
I think the question would be if you didn't have a reserve fund, why don't you have it rather than, where do you have it and what are you going to use it for?
Yeah, and, you know, if we look at, you know, a similar question could have been raised on Cape Wind, for example. A lot, we spent a lot more money on Cape Wind than we spent on the waste block. And so, but nobody raised that issue then. A similar issue could be raised, you know, I have, we have reason to believe that one of our DRIs is going to go to trial in March. It's a significant one, will probably, in all likelihood, cost us much more than we will spend on wastewater next year. So, it's just another expenditure and I can't for the life of me figure out why this particular subject matter has given rise to this complete misinformation that if we're not a named defendant, we shouldn't be spending money to protect ourselves. Not to mention, we were served a notice of intent to sue and we responded to that. Our response to that, which we use money to pay outside counsel, is part of the reason that we haven't been joined as a defendant because we vigorously defended that.
I'm not asking you to defend what we've spent. I supported what you spent and I think you've heard me say that.
But it continues to be the case that we are, you know, unquestionably a necessary party in the litigation, the federal litigation that's happening right now. And at some point, you know, we could be a defendant, at some point, we could be joined by the federal government. At some point, we could be directed by a special master. In all of those cases, I would want experienced Clean Water Act outside counsel on the phone with a reserve ready to pay them so that we don't wind up in a situation where we're compromising our position or compromising the taxpayers' position Cape-wide in a way that's going to cost them, you know, an enormous amount of money that might not be necessary.
Well, I appreciate your making it clearer for people because it's not just the question that I'm asking for myself. I need a question that?
I do, I appreciate that, Bill. I do, and you often do that.
The other piece is that you mentioned the DOT. In another venue that I'm involved with, I've seen the vulnerability that we have with, you know, with regard to DOT funding. DOT is a, public transportation, is an important part of, let's say, supporting what I call the overall transportation issues here, here on the Cape. And I'm wondering as to whether you've gotten any feedback from the state with regard to the, let's see, with regard to standing behind some of the needs that we have.
All right, I met with David Muller a month ago. David Muller came to the EMARPA meeting.
Yeah.
That's the Mass Association of Regional Planning Agencies. And he indicated that the tip funding is not likely to change in the coming year. However, he did not comment on the planning, the PL funds, that?
Well, good, the planning of PL funds is more state, the tip fund is the feds, right?
Well, it's all state, it's all federal, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's all federal money. So, I'm not sure, you know, if there's a decrease in what the federal government provides through the state to us for transportation, planning staff, then we're going to have to deal with that.
It's one of the areas where I would, there could be a significant cut.
Yeah.
Then it comes late in the year and it's hard to adjust to, but we try to anticipate that.
Bill, the 240 that you had asked about from licensement funds is in here as well?
Oh, yeah. And you're anticipating that, because I think you've made a presentation at the EDC about that, right?
Yes.
They already approved it, I think.
I have one other question. You have, on your, on your salary budget, the, you know, member of the IT staff over at?
Yeah.
The, you know, the question comes up, and I think we've, I raised it at the IT part, about where e-permitting fits in with regard to, absolutely with regard to Open Cape and also from, you know, from a point of view of a regulatory agency. And I think I've spoken to you at a previous meeting about your coming up with some type of, say, nuts and bolts suggestion as to what should be done to manage that program going forward. You don't have to answer that now, but that's all in the mix.
Sort of two answers associated with that. One is that, you know, our funding of IT positions has been, you know, a historical thing. As we start to get cuts in other programs, that becomes more and more difficult for us to do. So, I, you know, we begin to have some of those discussions about moving forward. On the e-permitting piece, it's a larger discussion about the potential role of the county, the Commission, in, you know, a strategic way, a strategic information office. And we've been working with Peter Carlson on that and Dan Gallagher at Open Cape to try to sort of figure out and answer some of those questions about what that might structure, what that structure might look like. And I think we'll be, we'll probably be ready to have a discussion in a couple of months on that. We haven't checked in on that particular piece since prior to the holidays. But there's, I think there are some interesting options out there. I think we, as we sort of go forward with the Open Cape process, we hear feedback from the communities about transparency and accountability and, you know, maybe a suggestion that the county should play a role in that long-term. And, you know, there are potential long-term revenue options that might be beneficial to the county, too. So, I think it's an intriguing discussion and, you know, one that we're going to, that will become an increasingly important one this year.
Well, I was just saying earlier that Yarmouth, we had a presentation from that county, or Dan, the other night. And it became very clear that they're kind of, they're sort of the developers, if you will, of the fiber, but all the rest of us are going to have to find a way to work with it and use it and benefit from it, even the e-permitting part. Obviously, towns are going to have a choice as to what they sign up for, what they choose not to sign up for. But the revenue that is, there's a revenue capacity there, as you said, that is, can be very important and significant.
I think the?
Both to operate it as well as to, or to assess fees in some fashion.
Yes. And the win-win scenario that's emerging in that particular one is that it could be a revenue enhancement for the county and at the same time, a revenue decrease for the towns.
Right, exactly.
Because we're talking about economy of scale. And that's what Yarmouth found out when they went out to try to procure the software, is that there was something magic about the number, population number of 250,000. So, it was as expensive for an individual town to buy that software as it would be for the region. And so, that's a really sort of special part of that and that's why we've been working so hard with that. And that grant is due?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
I think we're going to submit it on Friday.
Yeah, with a pretty, I think the state will make a decision pretty quickly on that.
Yeah, 30 days. Peter just said. Yeah, Peter said 30 days.
No, we've had the opportunity to go up and meet with Secretary Bilecki on that and this, I think there are two other e-permitting grants from other parts of the state that are going in also. I think we're in good shape to compete for those funds and the state, it seems to be a high priority for them.
Well, they've already invested in us to assert, in, by $40 million dollars through the federal government, so it would be?
Yeah, that's okay.
But I want to say that?
In your interest?
You've answered the questions that I had on the budget.
Yes, we.
Yeah, I have to, we're reorganizing the Cape-like contract.
Are you going to be there?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
So, I think, what was I going to say?
That's where I get the stupid.
I know, I talked about. I think, what was I going to say about this e-permitting? Oh, I just, you can, you can almost visualize a virtual town hall.
Yes.
I mean, where people don't even have to go there in a certain sense for that. You could have financial operations and other operations, but in terms of having to get any, do any business at all in town hall, you wouldn't have to.
No, it's, it really is sort of government 2.0 and it is much more efficient than the current way that we structure it as we manage information, as we manage people. But what's, what I like about, what really sort of attracted me to e-permitting is as we try to regionalize other services, we always run into two issues that I think are predictable and understandable. They are control and identity. The towns want to maintain control and they also want to maintain their identity. And on the Cape, that's essential. It's essential that the towns and their individual villages remain that, you know, maintain that identity. With e-permitting, the town gets to control the input, they get to control what they purchase, but they also get to control their identity because the people logging in won't know whether they're, they're going to log into a Yarmouth-specific website and they won't know that it's running through a county server, it's procured countywide. So, that really gets us over those two hurdles in regionalizations. And if we do this well, and I think we will, it opens the door for other services where the appropriate economy of scale is at the county level and other potential scenarios where there's, again, that the possibility for revenue enhancement at the county and a revenue decrease, expense increase in the towns. So, it's, I think it's very promising, but the thought of, you know, a building inspector getting up in the morning and getting in his van with an iPad and his route is already mapped out for him and he goes in and he can take pictures of things and when a consumer signs up, their contractor has already run through the state system and certified to be a good, that is just, you know, phenomenal. And we have to do that. And when you look at how much paper is still processed in these town halls, you know, it's amazing and it's all going to be electronic sooner rather than later.
And chaps and pozets and all of that.
And it would lay out the plan of the infrastructure.
The financial information is there.
To go, to expand that in other ways. It's already worked here, so it's, it would be easier than to, to hook on other services and?
Other important points as they relate to people, though, also, is that, you know, it will make governments more efficient over time, but if you look at the age of the workforce out there also, we're going to need, you know, technology to replace people in a lot of these things. It will become less expensive and through attrition, you know, we're going to wind up with a smaller, more efficient workforce.
And we have the psychological impact. Regionalization is happening and?
Virtually.
Yeah, and people don't even see it at first. And so, as those other changes come about, it's going to seem like more of the same.
Yeah, Peter and I have talked about this digital regionalization and, you know, I think it's, I think that really is the future county government. I really do. Information assembled, collected and thought about critically at the regional level is really the growth area for our county government.
I agree. Well, we were even talking earlier this morning about, I was looking at other counties around the, in other states, just for informational purposes. Two counties that I happened to live in at one time and never even knew what county government was, but how different it is and how unique we really are. And then when I was looking at the property tax income to the Fairfax County in Virginia and it was over $3 billion, and you think, that's astounding, but if we looked at the population here of 225,000, whatever, and if we added up all of the expenses or all of the income that comes into the county and all the towns and came up with one number and then we looked at all the expenses of all of the towns in the county together and then compared it to either a city or another county of the same size, what would it tell us? That, you know, we're spending a whole lot more than what we really need to to get services?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've seen there have been studies done, business roundtable does.
Right, yeah.
Case.
We should get that study.
All you'd have to do is ask for it.
That's what we're going to do. Well, he said the BRT did that study.
Oh, they did do it. Recently?
We should ask.
In the last couple of years?
Yeah, last couple of years and they looked at, they tried to find other similarly sized coastal counties.
Oh, yes.
And so, they, there's a bunch of information out there.
Right.
But it's, you know, there are, there are more efficient ways to provide services.
Right, without taking away, as you say, the identity.
Another thing I saw was the county is divided into different, they call them districts, right? So, the Board of Supervisors is elected by district, but they're elected for four terms and they serve four terms and they're done.
Yeah, term limits.
Yeah, I mean, that's it. You're automatically elected for four terms. You don't have to keep going back and get re-elected and at the end of those terms, you're out.
Yeah.
And somebody else comes in. It was kind of interesting just to, just so that. Do you have any other?
I don't. I think, as you say, it's very complete and it's pretty clear.
It's the same thing that we're going to do and that is to come up with a lower number than what we have this year.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of the state of the nation at the moment.
Just on your health insurance?
Oh, yeah. Are those numbers up to date?
No, they're not because Maggie just got back from the Cape Cod National Health Group Steering Committee, so they have some preliminary numbers. Those numbers, I believe, they may be modified, but they may be approved next Wednesday by the full Cape Cod National Health Group Board. So, next Wednesday, we'll know the actual number and I'll be able to go back and recount what actually happened.
Do you expect it to be better?
Yeah, a little bit better.
And we're reminding ourselves it's a one-time savings.
And thinking about these, these numbers will definitely be lower, I'm sure, than what they were this year.
They will be lower, I believe, yes.
And the question is, it's going to be a one-time savings. And so, how are we going to handle that? Are we going to take it and just use it and spend it? Because next year, there won't be any more savings. It'll be this year only because next year, the premiums will either be more than what they are this year or maybe close, close to them anyway. So, overall, huh?
Or higher.
Or even higher, well, there probably will be higher.
Yeah.
If, depending on who gets elected in November.
Up to 25% of the first-year savings you put aside as a mitigation.
I know, 25% of it, that has to happen. Yeah, that's the employee share of the savings, right?
It doesn't have to happen, but the law allows for up to 25% of the first-year savings. And we've talked about that and we would probably recommend doing the 25%. We would probably recommend doing a premium holiday. That's kind of the fairest and most equitable way to?
For the 25%. But I, don't you think that maybe you and the department heads ought to have a discussion about how to, or how, however, you might suggest we discuss handling the savings from the premiums this year, aside from the 25%?
Well, you know that in your budget, you have to cut $623, even from last year's number.
Right.
So, it's going to be more than that. So?
So, it's more than the?
So, before we start saying how we want to, we're just going to keep that in the back of your mind. But that's, yeah, I mean, we talked about putting it aside as the beginnings of a Gatsby OPEB fund.
Right.
We talked about that.
We talked about that. The only question is, are we gonna be in a position to do that? That's gonna be the tough. My initial.
Sure. I believe that you already, I believe that, Gail, you went over this really fast, but you know, there was discussion here this morning and going over this and we had several other delegates here on the grant contracts and from what Mark had here is the actual revenue in 11, the approved and what has come into date for 12. And it's right in the front page, I'm not on their budget, I'm on what Mark presented us today.
Oh.
Was that resolved? Did we have this, I mean, you went through things, so that was pretty fast, so that's pretty much.
On the last page, I used their numbers, so in, in going into the 2013 budget, it's what Paul has on here, which is fine, as I mentioned, it did bring down mass as EOT, we sort of know that.
I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed.
The first page, the issue was really only the billing, it's all a billing one.
Okay, so it's just where, where the billing is at.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's touched on in case you're looking at.
Anytime you have to project above a budget number, you know, it becomes problematic into where you land on the number, but you know, we never come, we don't come back and we deal with it and if there's a shortfall, we make adjustments, but we always live within our budget.
I know, okay. I just wanted that to be stated.
I noticed that you had.
Spiro needs to hear that.
Yes, Spiro needs to hear that, we need to.
He needs to pop up at budget meetings. He was here for the revenue, it was very good.
He was here for the revenue discussion.
It was good, it was good that he was here.
And he said, if our revenue numbers matched their, his revenue numbers, we would have no problem.
If we can agree.
If we can agree on.
Does Spiro have personal revenue?
He does, for the county.
Yeah, he's been misquoted, yeah. If, if there's an agreement on the revenues, then it shouldn't be a problem.
Meaning if our numbers agree with his numbers, then we won't have any problem with the assembly.
I can't see, I can't wait to see the numbers.
Yeah, that's a bit stark. Because I would've been out of the room. No, it was very good, it was good that they were here.
It was very good.
Of course, we have our finance chair here.
We have four members here in the back.
Yeah, I would just say, and I had an opportunity to address the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce last week and was there when they went around the table and talked about what a strong summer a lot of them had had and how business is looking. And you know, you look at sort of state revenues and where they are and even I look at our regulatory program and as an indication of the economy and, you know, I'm not pessimistic about where we are, so.
I agree. And if I could just mention, I talked to two people over time at the Cape Cod Commission and there was lots of kudos, they were very impressed with statements that you had made about the wastewater issue and they thought that your comments were very strong and provided leadership on the, on the issue, so I just wanted to give you that feedback, it was.
What discussion?
It was a discussion, I wasn't there unfortunately and neither were.
Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce asked me three or four months ago.
Oh, at the chamber meeting?
At the chamber meeting.
Yeah, to come in and talk about wastewater and so I think reportedly they're gonna have me back. They recognize that this is a huge issue for the economy.
Right.
And they, they understand the intersection of the environment and the economy and so they want to be keep, be kept apprised of where we are and as you know, we've been really talking about the problem for a long time now, but with the litigation in the background and just the dramatic degradation of these estuaries and embankments, we have to start talking about solutions this year, that's what our regional plan is all about, so we've begun that, we'll finish that regional plan by the end of the calendar year and it will, it will offer a solution to this problem so that we can, we can get serious and hopefully get the federal and state government serious about helping us get our way out of this. So that, the chamber has been very supportive of our, of our position on that and they really should be credited for their ability to, to understand and deal factually with what I believe to be our most pressing issue. Can I mention the whole, this is in the two birds with one stone pile and this whole idea of a second dredge keeps coming up.
Yeah, I was just.
Right now, it's sort of coming up because of, you know, timing issues with the permits and all of that, but I started to speak with Andy about maybe making a second dredge available for environmental reasons. So anything in the regional kind of wastewater plan that utilizes perhaps a second dredge might help us get some funding for it, because that's gonna be the key. Yeah, it will be there.
Inlet widening.
The way that we're gonna structure the plan is to look at the least expensive things first and those sort of natural projects that increase flushing are right up there and so, you know, if we had a, maybe even a different dredge that could get into different spots that we can't get now.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, smaller dredge.
There might be an opportunity to find some funding sources that are related to wastewater remediation and so that would be a high priority for us.
Well, like I know, I have talked about, because they have a meeting next week, a subcommittee of the wastewater, of the Water Quality Management Committee, to look at the inlet widening on Bourne's Pond and Loom Pond and that, that whole idea is, is to really reduce the nitrogen, so, I mean, if that's, if that's an outcome and if it actually works, then I would think something like that, and it takes a dredge to do it, to, to be, it could be eligible for some type of funding.
Right.
Because it relates to the reduction of nitrogen.
So I, I think that there should be a good discussion with you and, and yourself and Andy and even Wayne on how we can structure, you know, a proposal going forward for, for a, for another dredge for, and I think, and I agree with Mark, I mean, we have discussed this, the two of us, that this is, this is better than just saying, gee, we would like to have another dredge so that we don't have to be dredging in the summertime and that's not really the purpose of it. I think that the state is working with those windows and I think that there's a greater need for this dredge, that that's much more in the cost savings.
It's part of looking at this, one of the advantages of looking at it regionally and comprehensively, because there is the issue of a dredge which I think would help us enormously and would decrease costs for potential remediation efforts, but there's also, you know, there's, there's issue of some land acquisition that some of the towns are looking at to come up with to protect existing water bodies and transfer those development rights in and some of these regional resources could be used in, in that way too. So there are some projects that really could decrease the overall cost of wastewater remediation that are too expensive for towns on their own, but as part of a comprehensive plan and dredge is part of that, we can really do some important things here that just make sense and don't require us to build a lot of infrastructure that we're gonna have to maintain and operate in perpetuity.
Right.
Good.
Okay, so what's going on there? Sounds good.
Good.
And I don't have anything else?
Well, I have one other question.
Oh, okay.
In that second conversation.
Seriously, you'll think of it.
Yeah, probably.
Also, what else can we talk about until you think about it?
We have twenty minutes till.
And that's okay.
Yeah?
Is there anything else?
Anything else you wanna say? What?
Do you have any questions, John?
I already, Patty, some.
Yeah, John had an issue on the.
I just wanna make sure that we, as a, as a regional project, we're going forward from the Cape Cod Commission about solid waste contractual stuff. There's fourteen towns hanging out there, maybe Bourne is not right, Bourne is definitely.
Yeah, sure, we're done with thirteen now.
We have Bourne and Brewster.
Bourne and Brewster are out of, thirteen more towns to negotiate, 2015 is when, I think, Buffalo comes up.
And we're already with that?
Yeah, the end of 2014 is the end of the long-term CMAS contract, so your Solid Waste Advisory Committee continues to meet. At the last meeting, we decided to, we put out the request for expressions of interest, I think we had nine responses back. CMAS is still in the discussion, Bourne to some extent. Problem with Bourne landfill is that it's really only got about ten years of capacity for all the towns, but I think there's a place for Bourne in this overall solution. It may not be for MSW, it might be for waste that are, you know, other types of waste, like recyclables or that kind of thing. We've decided to interview two other firms, one is Waste Management and the other is E.L. Harvey out of Westboro. So that, those interviews by a small subcommittee of your SWAC will happen in February. The other sort of interesting thing that's happened is that, and I know, Mary Pat, that you know this, that the Yarmouth Transfer Station is, has been an enterprise fund at the town of Yarmouth. They are putting out probably this week an RFP for a private entity to run that facility. So what happens at the Barnstable-Yarmouth Transfer Station could affect what happens with this long-term contract negotiation.
Possibly the upper Cape Transfer Station because of the reduction in the amount of waste.
Yeah.
And now Sandwich has been so effective in their pay-as-you-throw. I mean, their reduction of waste and increase in recyclables is huge, so now Falmouth gets a $150,000 grant to implement pay-as-you-throw, but you have to implement it, there's been no decision to implement it, but when you think about it, if, if, if the town kept the curb sign and still went pay-as-you-throw, you couldn't take, see, right now, that whole operation is mostly funded on the tax rate because it was an override, so there could be some reduction in the tax rate, but there would have, some of it would have to stay there in order to manage the wastewater treatment, I mean, the waste, the solid waste facility, but you could still buy the bags and do pay-as-you-throw at the curb. Then that would still increase the recyclables in the same way, you just don't have to take them to a, a transfer station, each homeowner. So I don't know where that's gonna go. I think the town's gonna have a workshop in February to discuss that whole option because there has to be a decision to go pay-as-you-throw before the $150,000 is available.
I see.
You have to make the decision and then that is the money to implement it.
I'll tell you, I was in Provincetown the other night and John Giorgio happened to be there talking about solid waste and his advice to Provincetown was establish an enterprise account now, so you'll have time between now and when the contract ends and you start a new long-term contract and start pay-as-you-throw now and if you do that, you'll have a good idea of the amount of waste that'll be diverted through recycling, you'll know how much MSW you have, so when you sit down to negotiate that long-term contract, you'll have a better idea of what kind of tonnage you're.
Very interesting, yeah, I hadn't thought about that, but that's very true, because if other towns have the same success that Sandwich had in reducing the amount of waste, that means a whole lot less waste is gonna go off the Cape.
That's right, and you don't wanna be negotiating a long-term contract for a level of waste you will be able to provide.
Right, interesting numbers.
So I guess the bottom line is stay tuned.
Yeah, but it's coming fast in your thing.
Yeah, it is, very fast.
Very fast.
Okay.
That's great.
That's good, thank you very much.
We're running, we're running ahead of schedule, Stacy, so it's good that you got here.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can move.
We can move right along.
Where did the grant money come from?
The state, the largest, the largest grant for solid waste of any town in the state.
Thank you, everyone.
Don't ask me how it happened, I don't know.
Is it because you already do curb side?
No, because the town applied for this grant under the, because other towns have applied for grants too, to do solid waste and the town received $150,000 to implement pay-as-you-throw. We haven't made, even made a decision to do that yet, but now the impetus is there to at least consider it, so we have a, and our Solid Waste Advisory Committee is very much in favor of it, so now we're gonna have a workshop, I think in early February, to discuss whether or not we should go, we'll pay-as-you-throw.
It's a no-brainer, I mean.
It is a no.
Pay-as-you-throw, single throw recycling, best thing ever.
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of benefits to it.
Yeah, you have a big green bin. Well, now we have the big green bin, the truck comes in for paper, cans, plastic, bottles.
We do glass differently than.
Yeah, that's how we used to do it too. But now it's got single throw reci, single throw recycling, it just all goes into the bin, boom, away it goes.
Yeah, co-mingle.
They sort it, co-mingle.
Co-mingle, right.
Are we on a break here?
Um, yeah, we, we really need to.
Two minute, are we gonna keep on going?
Are we, are we gonna keep on going?
It's up to you.
I think we should keep on going, stay sincere and go.
I think so too.
We'll be done.
Okay.
Okay. There's assembly today, right?
No.
Oh, there's no assembly today?
There is the special commission.
You gonna be there today?
County governments.
So we'll see them?
Yeah, I'll be there today.
Okay.
You know, I want there, I'm going to that too.
Okay, I'm gonna try to myself.
Get there earlier, you won't get a sheet.
It's warm in here, is it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's in here, isn't it? It's at 11:12.
Yes, it's at 11:12 today.
Okay, Stacy Gallagher from Children's Cove, welcome.
I have the window open.
I know. No, I'm a little warm myself, it just, it's a lot of hot air in here.
But it all just left.
Yeah, all that hot air, all just left, yeah.
We should be okay.
You're so unrolling here.
I know. I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Well, it was a lot of hot stuff we talked about, right? Okay, Stacy.
Hello.
Hi.
Introduction?
Huh?
Introduction?
Introduction.
Stacy Gallagher from Children's Cove.
Stacy Gallagher from Children's Cove.
Yes.
First, I wanna thank you for supporting the ordinance for, the equipment was approved, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
We're moving that along.
And I have to say that I think that vote got a little confused because of, you know, people throw out comments.
Well, I think they were confused about where it was coming from.
Questioning a certain, a certain, it was kind of a process or something, which put in, which is that typical thing, you have, everybody understands something until somebody raises a question at the very end, which raises a doubt in their mind, are they understanding this correctly?
Right, and I don't think it was a doubt about what it was for, I think it was, why is it coming from here and not from somewhere else in the process of it all, so.
Right, so, but it, it was all fine, it all worked.
And, and Tom Lynch was a great advocate.
Yeah.
Very good, I just actually sent them an email.
Did a really good job describing it.
Please run it out to Tom Lynch.
The acting county manager.
Yes, I am. All of a sudden, he's very sympathetic to budgets.
Well, he went from interim to acting.
Yeah, I know, it does make a huge difference in your attitude about being flexible about your budget.
Okay, okay. So I just wanna start off with that I'm, I'm almost, I think, identical to my request from last year with, with my new initiative as well, with the $40,000 for our family advocate salary, simply because we are continuing to pay that salary through fundraising efforts and grants and I wanna somewhat be at a point where Children's Cove can sustain salaries through the county, so I'm hoping that we can do that this year. So I requested $40,000 and that's with, right now, what's happening is about $30,000 of that is coming from grants and about $25,000 from our fundraising efforts are going to that salary. Other than that, our, our line items remain the same as last year, I think our biggest is the $20,000 miscellaneous contractual going to our marketing, our internal supervision and other contractual alarm, you know, telephone, that kind of thing.
Andy, we were stating, the code came up just very briefly this morning, it does look like all of your grants are being approved that you normally rely on.
The 65.
Your 65.
Um. Um...
Is that your understanding?
We won't know that.
100%, but we're...
We won't.
We feel comfortable...
Well, I don't... I'm probably 60/40 comfortable every year, so we don't know. We never know until the very last minute. So we put it in here with the hope that it will be.
Right.
And if it's not, I think our backup has been, we'll deal with it.
That's what I remember. Two years ago, we had this issue. And I think, but the issue was that we left it out.
Two years ago?
And there we got it.
We left it out?
And it freed up all this money that we ended up fighting.
And we added it, so we had extra money. And now...
Right.
And now we're putting it in with the hopes that we get it, and we're kind of leaving it. I don't know what else to do because we don't know what's going to happen. The hope eventually is to maybe get back to where it was originally with double back.
Right.
And that's what some of us are fighting for. I don't know if that will ever happen.
Right.
It's been about five years that it's been cut in half. So the good part about that is, is that there's three counties that get that, and there's three counties that really need that money.
Right.
And they're either going to supply it all or supply none.
Right.
But I don't think they're ever going to cut that money completely. They may not double it back, but I think we're safe.
I haven't heard about first half state revenues, have you?
No, but he's right that the revenues are better. We have increased...
Well, most of the towns are not... I mean, I know in Falmouth, we're budgeting a 5% reduction in state aid from last year. I mean, from this year. We're not counting on even getting the same amount in state aid.
And it's...
Just because it's conservative budgeting.
Yeah, right.
And if it comes out to be more, then it'll just be a blessing. And if it isn't, then we're okay.
Right. And it comes down to essentially, we do all of our asks through the DCF Commissioner. It's his say whether we get that money or not because it's in their budget.
And when do you usually find out? Isn't it in the... Is it late spring or...
Yeah, very late.
It's almost after the...
That's what I saw.
That's the problem.
So now, this money that you have put it in there, and you're counting on it to meet your budget requirements because it's in there now.
For salaries, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
For salaries. Is that all salaries? Does that include the 42?
It's 65 of whatever the total is. I don't have the total in front of me. It's like any other entity at the county. You're... The Commissioner said they were 80% salaries. You're probably close to that.
Right.
No, I guess my question was, were you funding the family advocate salary out of the 65?
No.
No, you were not.
No, I'm requesting 40 in addition to... Other than that, my... I don't think anything's, besides our telephones, have decreased a little bit, but...
No. The... Your salary, though, is almost $100,000.
No, three... The salaries are on the top page.
That's where I'm looking. And it's from 259 to 350?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. The name...
That's like almost $100,000.
Well, it's 52.
This is how I do the Cove's budget. I look at their personnel.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And calculate what the salary number is. And then put 65 of the salary, assuming that we get the grant, and then the other piece of the salary, 42, is for the same grant. That covers the same... The same person. And then whatever is left over is funded by the county and goes into that top line. So I don't know where that 350 number came from. I don't think it's mine. So what I will do is I will go back and make sure that whatever that number is...
No, that's not 50.
Oh, yeah, it's not 50. It really comes up to be like 50...
So how did it get from 259 to 350?
I don't... I think what Stacy and I are saying, we don't know where the 350 number came from. I didn't do it.
And I don't think that happened last year, too, because the number jumped up. They may have done that, but I don't have that final number.
Okay.
So I'll do this... What I have to go back and do, and I just finished a retirement allotment yesterday, so I have to plug all those in. The group insurance, which is the health insurance, we'll know at the end of next week.
Next week.
I'll plug all those in, and you'll get a full package on what does the requested budget look like.
Right.
And we'll see how far off we are.
With the increases of each department.
With the matrix of the increases of each department.
Okay. Requested increases.
Because I'm not sure where that 350 number is, it came from either. So I'll have to go back and look at it.
That's all I have.
And all is going well?
Going straight forward.
Going very well.
Yeah, it is going. And your strategic planning is still scheduled for the 27th of April?
Yes. We have someone from Northeast Regional coming in to do that for free. And we're trying to get a venue for free and going from there.
Good.
We're hoping for a three-year plan to start and go from there. And we wanted to get someone who has knowledge of child advocacy centers so we don't have to waste an entire day explaining, this is what a center is, this is our mission.
Yeah.
We can just kind of go forward and do a three-year plan. So our board's been very supportive. We have a bunch of new members, and they've been great. So they're all willing to spend the day and do a retreat and go from there.
Excellent.
Yeah, we're in a good place.
And you'll be part of that retreat?
Yep.
I might drop in on it myself for some of it, just to hear how that plan is pulled out. Okay.
We have our nurse in place. I don't know if I let everybody know that, so...
Yes, I think you brought you...
Oh, I agree. The Christmas party. Yeah, she's great. She's finalized. She's being trained right now by PD Sein, and she will... She'll hopefully be... Northeast Regional is funding a training for her out in Utah, so she should be trained by mid-March and up and running, so... And we don't fund that, so that's a good thing, too.
And that's funded by the hospital.
Hospital and PD Sein.
Good.
Thanks.
Other questions?
I have no other questions. We're easy. And you've done a good job.
How is your little one? Now that we've added another year.
She's good. She's got a little mouthy.
Really?
How old is she?
Two. Or you know what? You have to...
You have to be very patient, too, because that's the table... You know, and you can't be looking at them like they understand what you're saying, even though they're so smart and they seem like little adults.
She's two already.
They don't get it.
They're only two.
The sicknesses are coming right now, so...
Oh, yeah. You're getting all that childhood stuff.
It's good on the eyes.
Wait till they get to be 16.
Everybody keeps saying that. Oh, just wait.
Well, you know, I did not have it in the meantime.
So was there ever a break?
I didn't... I have to say, I...
21.
Somebody... I don't know if it was the right kid, but if it really was, I'd get mixed up.
You do get a break. It's like seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
You're the greatest thing in the world. Yeah, they think you're great.
Even 12. My daughter, 12, is fine.
You know, the illusion starts to wear off.
My daughter's become great right now. It's all about daddy.
Around 13.
All about daddy.
Oh, good. All that store. Daddy. Oh, good.
Yeah. What about me?
That's okay. Don't take it personal.
I'm just a caretaker.
That's okay. The feedbag, my brother would say.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Before I forget, did you have your next week's package?
Is that all you gave it to me?
I gave it to you, but I didn't give it to Sheila.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're done?
I just have a...
No, Mark has it.
I have my report, which I'll leave a copy for Bill. He'll come back.
Okay.
And a copy for you. And nothing earth-shaking. It's just a reminder of the storm closure procedure, so you have that.
Oh.
Hopefully, we have one this year.
Hopefully, we won't need it this year. So far, so good. Not even on the horizon. This coming Monday is Martin with the King Day, of course, and you know, every year, RDO AmeriCorps does an event for Martin with the King Day. And this year, they're doing a number of different things. They'll be reconstructing homes in Yarmouth, making garden beds and food collection bins in Orleans, collecting food items for the Lower Cape. They're selling draft doorstoppers for local councils on aging, and they're paying groups home in Provincetown to benefit the AIDS support group up there. And this year, they will begin their day at Orleans Elementary School at 9:00 a.m. And if anyone is interested in volunteering, they can see AmeriCorpsCapeCod, all one word, dot O-R-G, and you can volunteer.
Okay.
And just a reminder, next week, Friday and Saturday, is the MMA Conference.
Yes.
I am.
And...
I can't forget that.
You won't forget that, no. And you're all signed up for the Maya lunch.
Yes.
Oh, the Maya lunch and WeMo lunch.
It's on Saturday. WeMo lunch, I didn't sign you up for because I don't go to that.
Oh, Karen.
Because I'm not a...
I think we told Karen to...
No, Karen, I already asked, and she did.
Because I'm not a woman...
I know. You're not centric. Yeah, you're not thinking about that. But you have to think about us.
A woman elected official.
You know, you do have to...
I have to... I do the insurance one, that's what...
The Colonel of the State Police is the speaker.
Yes. Right. And I saw Cam Neely speaking at some point. I think he must be doing it there.
Yeah, one of the dinners, I think.
And finally, on Friday, January 27th, at 1:00, in the Dick Bigos Community Room at the Community Action Center on Enterprise Road, the annual Cape and Islands Budget Forum, co-chaired by Senate President Therese Murray and Senator Dan Wolf.
And when is that?
Friday, January 27th, 1:00. You should have gotten an invitation.
I did. I got one.
And if you didn't, Pat, I can give you the one I have.
Oh, okay.
And you know it's over on Enterprise Road.
I know, CIC, yeah.
Yeah, CIC building. That's it.
Hmm. Did we get any notice about Cape Selectments meeting this month?
I know. You know what? They usually hold it at the MMA.
That's right.
Oh, that's right.
They always do it in the in-between on Friday.
That's exactly right.
Right around... Before 12:00 hour.
Yep.
Right after the conference.
On Saturday morning, no?
No, it's Friday.
They've been usually doing it on the Friday.
It's Friday evening at 5:00.
Because they know everyone's going to be on that floor, so they gather everyone.
Yep.
Here's the invitation to the budget.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Yeah.